Number one please, I'll now call the Spartan County Commission Mayor 2019. Your order.
Thank you, Sheriff.
At this time I'll ask Mr. Jackie Duncan if he would give our discussion.
Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, as you will allow us to come together once again and pray your blessings over this county, the cities it encompasses, over the state, and over the greatest nation in the world. Lord, let us always be knowledgeable of the rewards and benefits of doing things according to your will, not only at the end of our journeys, but every step along the way, as we're given new mercies and ability to cope and endure the bad flows of life that sometimes we get just from living. And all that we endure and all that we make to go through, let us always remember to pray and to trust in you for all things and to never lose our praise. May your judgments be fair and may our considerations be pure and unwavering. We pray your blessings over those at every level, protect and serve this great county, this city, this every city, this state and all the whole nation, and we pray that you will bless them as they serve in every capacity that life and liberty may be threatened. And as you are called and asked to answer, we pray that you see your face and hear you say, "Well done." It is in your son's name that we ask for.
Thank you, Jackie. At this time, my pledge, if you would remove your hats, please let your pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Captain. At this time, we will have a roll call. And I would like to mention to you that if you, for commissioners, if you need, if you want to speak, there were some in the past who said last week, last week that they're having a hard time getting back to lecture as a commissioner, if you want to address the bottom, that you make sure to use the button, lecture your own, okay? All right. Thank you. And so we'll have one sign in. At this time, we will approve out number five on the agenda, but I've got two additions to add to your agenda. Number one, adding a seven B, I'm asking Mr. Chris Conklin with the Census Bureau if he will come after seven A, if he will come and write a short presentation to our County Commission and public regarding the census, and we're getting ready for that, so I've asked Chris to come, and he just came from Sevierville, I appreciate your coming, Chris, for being here, but we should do more events. And then after his presentation, if you want to hang around, you're welcome to, if you want to go back home and suffer, you can leave, but I appreciate your coming, and he'll share more about that with you later. And then out of, on a new business, ten D, adding resolution 2019-03 on the proposed hotel hotel tax. So if you would add that to your agenda, please. So those are two additions to your agenda. So with that in mind, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
What's your top?
Talking about Jackie Duncan?
Second.
Five, okay, okay. Motion second, discussion. There have been none, let's go, please. And I appreciate Donna working this machine. She's practicing on it, she's getting better. My thing will get better as we practice, and I appreciate her commitment to do that and her being here.
Not in years.
Not in years, thank you. Okay. Then out of six, we will review and leave approval of the amendments of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Uh, Kemp, Southfield, second. Todd, Rocket, discussion. There have been none, let's go, please.
2019-01, Resolution in Honor and Recognition of Charles Elmer Wells for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Charles Wells earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as the Coffee County clerk for a total of 32 years. He was first elected in 1962 and served eight terms. He retired in 1994. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved, therefore, that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commends Charles Wells for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the family of Charles Wells receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained or filed as a permanent record. Pass this on order this eighth day of January 2nd of 2019.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second, second by any son. Okay, discussion. There have been none, let's go, please, and we're going to thank Mr. Wells for his service for those 32 years. Thank you. Chris, you might come forward. Appreciate your, appreciate your service, and he and I spend an hour or so here about three quarters ago, as we come at the end, we decided to all do it, and I'll turn it over to the chair with you, but he's got a big service here, and I think Jackson, Google Data, China, so he's been a few miles also, thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Again, my name is Chris Conklin, I am the Partnership Specialist for the U.S. Census Bureau of Middle Tennessee, and my responsibility is to reach out to communities such as yours and create relationships to help maximize and accurately, gain an accurate account for the 2020 census. As some of you are probably aware, the U.S. Census or the census is mandated under, in the Constitution, under Art One, Section Two. It's a very important process that we go through every 10 years. This process, it allows us to make sure that we have appropriate representation of the U.S. House of Representatives, it allows us to draw district lines appropriately on both a federal and a state level, and more importantly, the data collected by the census allows us to meet future needs of communities. So our goal for the 2020 census is to count everybody one time, make sure we count them only once, and make sure that we count them in the right place. And we also want to be able to conduct, conduct the 2020 census in the same manner and with the same accuracy that we did in 2010. Now, Tennessee fits in a region under the Philadelphia Census Region, the Census Bureau, that's comprised of nine states, including Washington, DC. So as you all are probably aware, we just got to wake up on April 1st, 2020, and said we're going to start counting those. We have to do a lot of work to make sure that we get an accurate count. We've already started that over the past year. So I'm going to break down the census process in really just four basic operations. And the first operation is making sure we know where to count people, and we did that through a process of reaching out to communities such as yours and getting a complete address list of people who live in your community. We've compiled that list on a national level, and we're going to use that information to be able to reach out in April to, again, ensure we have an accurate count. The second process, or the second operation, is to encourage people to participate in the 2020 census, and we'll get back to that just a minute. The third process is to actually do the count. Again, we'll start that on April 1st of 2020. We will do some, a little bit of work before that to make sure we're doing some counting, but the vast majority of that starts in April 1st of 2020. We'll go a few months to make sure that we get that. And then we have to compile that information, and we have to present it to the president's desk by December 31st of that year. Now, I want to, the reason I'm here tonight is to really talk about that second operation is encouraging people to participate. So how do we do that over the next year as we build up and gear up for the 2020 census? You'll see me, and people like me a lot more often, and I'm here to create relationships and really just get into the community, find community leaders, find people, the key influencers in the community to dive in and tell, help tell a story of the census, why it's important. The census is just not numbers. You might think of it as just counting people, but that data is the gold standard. That data goes to make sure that we have, for grandbros to make sure that they have appropriate information. It goes to make sure that we get appropriate federal funding to the states. There's more than $675 billion annually that goes to the states. It's about 41% of our, I'm sorry, 13% of state funding or budgets are provided by federal funding that goes to programs such as Medicare, foster programs, adoption programs, and other medical programs. So it's very important that we have an accurate count. And as I was speaking with the mayor before the holidays, George Washington University was able to compile a study about what the actual cost is of not completing an accurate census. That there's a, they were able to put a dollar amount to it. So what they, what they realized in doing their study is that there was a range between $533 per person all the way up to $2,300 per person. The lowest range was, Utah, the highest range was Vermont, I believe. Tennessee is the median state when it comes to that study. For every one person that is not counted in the census, it's roughly $1,091 that does not come back to our state on an annual basis. If you do that, extrapolate that out to 1% of the state populations, probably $70 million per year that we will miss in federal funding if we do not have an accurate count. So you can see why that would be very important, to make sure that we, we get those dollars, those federal dollars that we pay in taxes back into our communities. So that's, that's the double figure. The other figure is, is, let's talk about schools. We do this count every 10 years. Thank you, some of you may have children that are four, you may have grandchildren that are in that age range. If they go 10 years without the ability to be counted accurately, they've gone through their elementary school years, they've gone through their junior high years without having federal funding attached to them, so to speak, they're not counted in the population. So it's very important that we do that. So what I, we, the mayor and I talked about, and what we're doing across the country is partnership specialists are digging in with the highest elected official in the counties and the cities and other leaders in the, in the community, and we are forming what they're called, they're calling the Complete Count Communities. This is a volunteer-based community committee, again, that has influencers from the community that are able to be those neighbors, those trusted neighbors, and help, help us get our messaging out to talk about the importance of the census. So I talked a little bit about why we do the census and how we do the census, but it really depends on you all as a community. We are here to work with you and that we're going to engage with you over the next year to help facilitate these committees. We were setting them up throughout the state now, there's a lot of work that's gone into them, and we're hoping to move forward here in Coffee County with the establishment of a Complete Count Committee. That's really all I have to present, and I try to truncate my, my presentation for the, for the purpose of time, but I'm here for any questions of the committee, and are there councilmen that we have?
I just have one comment. Aside from all the good things that you did mention, I could visualize when you were talking about a commercial maybe with advertising, for your census commercials advertising, the importance of it in finding, doing research, family history. I've done a lot of that lately, and I've seen, I haven't been for the census, it's really been a problem kind of local family, and that's been a good, that's a good.
And that is a great point, and census data, those genealogy records that you were using, we release those every year after seven, about seven decades. We can't release that information under U.S. law. So every year, it goes back about seven decades, and we're able to release those genealogy records, and that's what you're looking at online when you, when you are searching through those records to put that family tree together.
Is there a possibility the census might go online?
Yes, for the, and I'm sorry, I missed that point. For the first time this year, the 2020 census will be available online. We've, you know, we've been asked for years, why are we not doing this online? Is there an online option? Well, we've listened, and for the very first time, we're going to offer that to the public. Now, we will still have telephonic responses available, we'll have the response through the mail, and we will also have face-to-face enumeration, where people come to your house and you're able to do that. And we have, we have those options available, again, to try to maximize an accurate count.
And I believe Chris had mentioned that, as far as employees, that would be for a time rifle by 12 to 14 months, those would be federal employees, the guest may run online, you could plow line on it now, about 50 to 80 or so people, I'm not sure how many in that, and the range on the, between $12 to $17 an hour.
Right, between, it's between $12 and $15 an hour. We are, it is a temporary status, they are federal employees, we are, we are hiring roughly half the people nationwide over the course of the census. Each community, Coffee County included, well, we were looking to have people go out and do address canvassing with that list that we compiled, and they'll go out and make sure that those addresses actually exist. Our next mission will then be to go out and, for those nonrespondents that, for the, for the online or through the telephone or the mail option, we will actually send employees out to, you know, to each store to make sure that we get the respondents. So we are hiring, we're hiring here in Coffee County. Our area census office is established in Shelbyville in Bethard County, so we care, are covering a large swath of land, and basically a horseshoe around Nashville is the Bethard County Shelbyville lane that we are responsible for. But each county in the middle Tennessee that I'm responsible for, we are going to be hiring roughly 50, around 50 to 80 people for the census to go out and do those missions.
And we're hoping many of those will be veterans and later seniors and whomever, so put a plug into that. Any other questions for Chris?
Are the applications, can you apply for these positions, come live?
Yes.
Do they require a vehicle?
They don't require a vehicle, yes. They all work at home positions, however, those positions are going to require the person to leave their home, leave their house to be able to complete the task. The minimum qualifications as of right now, if you ask, you have to be 18 years or older, a U.S. citizen, and you have to have an active and working email address and internet service. And that's because we will be providing technology and training, and some of that training will be online training for the employees.
Any other questions? Very informative, looking forward to working with Chris and everything on that, and no other questions? One more.
It's starting yet? 30 minutes?
Yes, yes.
Good on them now.
Yes, and that website is 2020census.gov/jobs. We do update that on a regular basis, so I encourage each of you or anyone in the audience, if you know, if yourself or a family member or a friend is looking for employment, we will be hiring. We're looking for quality candidates, obviously, as in any organization, but it's really important that we, we have these jobs in the community and that people in your community get out and help us with this work, because again, we will not be successful in the census efforts if we don't have the support of the community.
And we need to try to find everyone in the county, because as you say, that's $1,091.
Yes.
So appreciate your support on that, and Chris, thank you for your research and your partnership and your time, and looking forward to working with you, and we have any other comments? Once, twice? Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you again.
Hang around, you can, or we'll mix up, you can do that, Dave.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Right, Elections, Appointments and Confirmations, AKA Notaries.
Mr. Rayner, I'd like to make a motion that we go on the notaries as approved.
That's fine. You have to second, do that.
That's it.
Second, I ask, okay, going on the notaries as approved. Any discussion? There have been none, let's go, please, on the notaries as approved. Here, Rick does.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that letter I and K, we defer to the March meeting. I think that we could have some conversation around the application process, brought up in Congress, just to get people that are willing to serve, that aren't getting a chance, so that's where I'm at on those.
A motion, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion. A motion, second by Bobby Ryan, two. That motion, that all.
That can be done, but you have to do an individual motion for each one when they get to it.
Okay. Okay, thanks, sir. So, thank you.
All right, A, Purchasing Commission.
Okay, the, those are mayor's performance, and we have presented for your approval, adding Jimmy Hollingsworth, Representative Manchester, Margaret Cunningham, Bobby Ryan, Barbara Buckner, of course, the layer serves on that, refers to that protocol, so those are the nominees, we'll have to have motion to approve. Box number 800, have a second. Second, Jackie Duncan, discussion. There have been none, let's go, please. Okay, thank you.
A C, Beer Board.
Okay, Mayor's performance on those, I'm asking these to serve on the beer board, Mr. Jim Hilden, Mrs. D. Ford, Scarlett Taylor, Dennis Hunt, and Margaret Cunningham. Motion to approve, and this was reviewed last night in the rule conference, but.
Mr. Chairman, would you read those again?
Okay, double check it, Bob, thank you. Jim Hilden, Missy?
No, that's Scarlett Taylor, I believe, should be in.
Okay, well, I've got Scarlett on here, that, that, Miss, Jim, Miss Young.
I was supposed to say.
That's right, that's right, David Orson, that's right, thank you. So, and who was the, excuse me, I messed that up. David, Jim Hilden, Barbie, Miss, and Scarlett.
That's right.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, excuse me, so, there are motions to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Both by Bobby Ryan, our rule conference chairperson, second, by Hilton Southfield, discussion. There have been none, let's go, please. Keep up there, okay?
Mr. Chairman, we need to have a voice vote on this.
Make up. Oh, both are good when they were. I'm asking Mr. Gary Hunt if he will, his term has expired, he's done a good job on a three-person audit committee, and I'm asking Mr. Hunt, a CTA here locally, got a good relationship with him, he was there with our committee and the brand in the process, but I'm submitting his name, Mr. Gary Hunt, for your approval, do I motion to approve? Motion by Missy, second, by Rosemary, discussion. There have been none, let's go, please.
If anyone want to change their vote.
Not in years, thank you.
A E, County Coroner.
Dr. Brennan has served years in that capacity, and I'm asking him to serve again, and I have motion to approve Dr. Brennan as your coroner.
I have a motion to approve.
Motion by Todd, second, by Ashley Cracker, discussion. There have been one, let's go, please. That's an interesting task that he asks, it's not veritable, but I appreciate his service. Tom?
Does anyone want to change their vote? Eight F, Rural Resources.
I'll defer to our rule conference chairperson on that, those are caucus recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, the rural caucus would like to put in nomination of Commissioners D. Ford, Hunt, Horrick, Hilden, and Ray.
Okay, thank you. Those are the nominations on that, motion to approve. Motion by Lynn, have a second. Second by Rosemary, thank you for your discussion.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
A lot of times people abstain when they're.
A lot of times, people abstain when they're being pointed and voted on. I just want people to know I'm not self-saying and I'm voting for other people.
I appreciate Dennis sharing that in his New Jersey accent, thank you. No discussion, let's go, please.
A G Veteran Service Officer.
Mr. Gene Steele has served our county for several years now as a veteran service officer. I appreciate your service and I'm asking him to serve again, and I would appreciate your support of that. And just a comment on the side on that, I met with Mr. Cracker's work about three weeks ago, and he's our area representative, whatever you call it, Gene, our veteran service officer, and he speaks very highly of Gene and the role he's played and services done, and I'm asking him to do some research on whatever, and we've got over forty-nine-hundred-and-so odd veterans in caucus camp. And Gene is serving that load and having even some veterans from other counties come and asking him to have processed that workload, and he's doing that for twenty-eight hours a week, twenty-four hours? Twenty-eight, okay, hour a week. Now, I haven't said that, that's a form of a caucus in some other counties in the survey he's doing, some other counties with a lot fewer veterans have more hours to go into their process than Gene does, and I couldn't agree so that in some of that. Like some full-timers, whatever, with a lot less veterans than Gene is servicing, so thank you for your service. So I have a motion to approve, Gene, is there?
Okay, Jackie, second, now, second by Rosemary, discussion.
Mayor, I'd like to say, just on, I know that I really appreciate what he does, you know, those veterans here, Sam, David, retired, of course, got disabilities also, and this is a job that is very well, very well done.
Thank you, Gene, for your service. And Gene, you have a uniform, and he always has his coveralls on. Gene, you have a uniform, but you got your hat on, so you're, oh, okay, very close, little room. Thank you.
A H Forests and Fields.
That's a rural committee, and three terms are coming up, and I've asked all three of them, will they serve again, and I appreciate the role they play and what they're doing with BCA. They don't beat everyone, but I had the privilege of serving with some of these gentlemen before I came on as a layer over the years, and they work well together, and we have a good team, so I'm recommending that we reappoint Kevin Sack, Little Luke, and Samuel Junior. I thank you for the service. A motion to approve. Motion by Margaret, second by Jim Fielding, discussion.
There being none, let's go, please.
Anyone want to change their vote?
None. Thank you.
A I Consolidated Industrial Board.
I make a motion to defer to March. Defer, have a second to that motion?
I'll have a second to that motion, Mr. Chairman.
So, second by Mr. Brown, discussion. And he shared a huge part of the reason for wanting to delay that until the March. Motion, second on four, discussion. Hold on, favor, all, let's go, please. Let's go, please.
Anyone want to change their vote?
A J Emergency Maintenance Agency Board.
We have three team members that have served their term, they've served well, and I ask for, one of the three, one, Dale Brandon, Michael Bonner, Oprah Ums, and Adam Fuller, we mentioned three of these, so I have a motion to accept those, one by Jim Sofield, second by Taylor Sofield, discussion.
There being none, let's go, please.
A K Pedant Building Authority.
I make a motion to defer to March, again, understanding that we put application process in place. So that we all understand.
Just picking up closer, Joe. The people are back here, hello?
So, the basics of my motion, I just want everybody to understand this, in caucus meeting last night, we had people come in who want to serve on some of these things, and we're not addressing it because we don't set a deadline, we don't have an application, and I think it's time that we do it all correctly, and so that everybody who wants to serve has a, so I ask that this go back to legislation, I guess, so that we can come up with a policy on how to address applying for these committee appointments. Thank you, Joe.
So have a second?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like a second to add, and hopefully, Mr. Hollis will add too. We want to initiate an application process immediately regarding this census, we want to bring it back to the March meeting, and ask that application be available in the mayor's office this coming Friday for anyone interested in these positions, and that we publish a public notice that these positions are open for anyone who may be interested to apply for, and hopefully, set a deadline maybe for the term of February the tenth, I think that would give us about a month prior to the March meeting, consider the applications, and we would like to have all the applications provided to all the commissioners once they do receive at the deadline.
On February tenth, okay.
Yes, that is, yes.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion, second, discussion.
Yes, I have a question, I'd like to follow up. Once received the application, once debating process, full commission meeting to vet or special call or legislative to pick the candidate to move forward, what do we think we'll be doing after we receive the application?
So, I mean, my intention here is just so that everybody gets their chance to do this, if they want to do it, okay? I will leave it up to legislative to give an opinion on how we handle it, and if we all agree on the policy from there, moving forward, but I mean, it was an hour and a minute made last night to have people show up to our meeting who would like to be considering for those positions here, and we never give them consideration, we don't tell them how to even be considered, and there again, as somebody who votes, even if I'm not in your caucus meeting, I will still, I know, who I'm voting for, and that's the other part of it, so that we all get to see more than just, hey, I like so-and-so to be on this candidate, okay? That's the intent of what I like to do.
David, it still leaves it up to that individual, for instance, on the Consolidated Industrial Board, it was the city caucus's responsibility to come up with that nomination, so any of those applications for that specific one would still come to our caucus, it just gives us a bigger choice to look at before we bring it before the full caucus or the full committee to vote on.
Tom, Mr. Petticoat, our volunteer, we may need to clarify it a little bit as far as the, what we're going to have a motion, but the, the, then this be referred to, we refer to the legislative commission?
What I was wondering, are you wanting to refer this to the legislative committee and then come up with a process?
Yes, I would like for them to set a process that everybody will agree to, yes.
So really, the motion is that we refer this to legislative committee, and are you wanting them to have this accomplished by the March meeting?
I would like to have it all accomplished in the March meeting, we are talking about nominations, is my intent.
Okay, so the motion is a motion to refer to legislative?
Commissioner, if you need a lot of comment, could we not have the applications that are submitted by the deadline as Mr. DeNese referred to, and correct me if this won't work, have all those applications submitted to the caucus that that nomination is related to, such as the industrial board was of Manchester, on the PDA, here was a rural consideration, and that might possibly be a Manchester consideration, so if that's the case, you know, applications be submitted to those caucuses, but also, the applications go out to all commissioners, you know, just in case, I want the applications to, to all commissioners, all commissioners to see the application, see all applications, but the ones going to a particular caucus where it's that caucus's nomination, they give to those applications, and they can decide whether they want to submit one from that group, two from that group, or even from that group to the full county legislative body.
Mr. Brown, I honestly wanted to clarify what you just said, if the commission, you know, is, votes on that side, I just wanted to clarify that we're, for the purpose of minutes, that we're doing a motion to refer to legislative with the stipulations that you have done, rather than just a motion to folks following the March meeting.
Yes. And since we didn't get that on I, I would like for it to be the same for I.
We can't really, can't really back up without a reconsider, but if you won't do that on I, let's get this one finished, and then we can back up, and then we'll go through the process.
So, motion number four.
If I, I'm sorry, can we also add to that, that the, I can talk about that, can we add to that too, that the applications are going to be available by Friday and make that also a stipulation, because I just want to make sure they're out soon.
So the application in form itself be ready by Friday?
Yes.
To, for people to call in and pick out?
Yes, sir.
What, I'm okay with that.
Right now, you're still building lines, as long as the first two seconds, and that Bobby is out of reference.
So a motion for, with a second? Any other whose, uh, that you can, now, wait.
I think I just punched request to speak.
You do. You're on.
I would like to, um, Tennessee Code does designate that these appointments to a public building authority given the oral point to be approved, so I'm wondering, should the application reviews actually just remain with the mayor? Don't anybody, and while I got the microphone, I would like to apologize to the people that actually did show up, to the caucuses that actually thought a decision was going to be made tonight, I know, I do appreciate your involvement in our government, and I know everyone that showed up had our best interest and their own best interest at heart, so an apology is due, but this is the prudent thing to do for this board, but somebody please, you know, the mayor, if you want to expand on the fact that it's a Tennessee statute, it is a mayor oil.
First, I can vote in the first and second, and they're in agreement, but if not, they will actually amend.
And it is a statute, because the statute makes the appointments subject to confirmation approved by, placed by, so they're on the oral, on the PDA.
On PDA, but all sorts of this is due, you can come in and order from the caucus, whatever. So, David, do you?
Well, we're not doing it just for that change, absolutely.
So, let me, let me make sure I understand what we're saying, so for the PDA board, it's not a caucus, it's a mayor or mayor oral appointment, so.
Oh, we will receive applications.
I'm okay with that, I would be, applications are coming to the mayor, and the mayor do his thing, I'm okay with that. But hopefully, mayor, with that comment being said, you will seek input from those caucus.
Votes, I'm sure you all will, okay, then, vote.
Mr. Chairman, I believe commissioners said well, and it's a mayor oral appointment to get, subject to confirmation of the county legislative body. Whereas, you know, the word, the mayor is going to receive all these applications and look at them and consider them, but you're going to seek input from the caucus, which you have done, and we appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm, I'm buying.
So, now, I'll be, especially, please.
I just wanted to make a quick comment and reiterate what Dennis said, I appreciate Mr. Brooks and Mr. Lowery coming last night, they basically wasted their time, I didn't say to change the process, but I do appreciate their involvement.
But I appreciate their interest, both of them, and your time, thank you, sir. Any other, okay, any, the answer you don't have?
I only had a question as to, were those the previous? Or the ones that were changed, because remember, they changed part of their policies, procedures, their minutes, or whatever, so is that? I'm trying to come up with that word. Okay, because remember, they changed the bylaws? All right, I'm good.
Okay, any others? Just hold on the motion, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, the referral to the legislative committee is not necessary at this point?
I think, I think that will be the process, just go forward, I think that'll be the process. Referred to legislative, that is, that is the thing with this process, the question.
Thank you. I think we're really happy there's two different questions, number one is referring to PDA appointments in particular, and we're talking about a process change for all of our applications, so it's really happy to hear that. If we just, if we agree that, that we need to collect applications, can your office just not handle that?
Yes, it can.
And we really need to vote on having the mayor collect applications for our needs.
Well, the intent is not to disclose the application, the intent is that we have a process in place that we set the deadline, we have to have it, and there's things that we follow, okay? We're not even collecting applications today, so that would be a plus for me.
So, I'm all for referring that, please, but you have a separate question, and you have a separate question in these particular PDA appointments.
So I'm going to restate what I like, right, that we defer to March, and there it is. Let's see, I want to defer the case to March, and give her a time to do the recognition.
Any other questions? Let's go, please.
Okay, I'm going to defer, right?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And we need to make a complicated report.
And Dale Planning Commission.
Okay, we have three members' terms have expired. Three positions. And I've asked Mr. David Ford to serve as a new member of the planning commission. And I'll thank Lee Doug for his service all these years. And I motion to reappoint Tim Morris and Dennis Sutt. And thank y'all for your service all the years. So we have a good planning commission. And I appreciate Lee for his service all the years. Those are the three recommendations, David Ford, Tim Morris, and Dennis Sutt. So at this time off, except for temporary. Motion approved by Bob Bryant. Second by Jackie. Jackie, you're late, but I'll go with you to that. Discussion.
I can't believe we go that thing down. That's just still a service.
Jackie, I will thank him for his service and his service all the years. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we're better than all the services as well. And he's still on the company, but I appreciate his service on that committee and all committees all the years. And his service also as commissioner for the years. So, any other discussion or any discussion? Let's go, please.
A.M., Board of Health.
Oh, Board of Health, I've asked Debbie Dickie, who is there, County Director of Health, our Health Department. And these people have served for years and there are four years we've been able to do that. And these are, we have over one of them. Ten of them, but over one is what we serve to do. Those recommendations are Dr. Bill Sanders, Admiral Smith, Barker Butler has been serving. I appreciate all the service. And this is in quarters of the makeup of that committee. And Ray Markle will be serving or replacing the pharmacies that was there. So he'll be new. Dr. Jake Trussler, Dr. Lawson has been home. Dr. Paul with the county school system, Andy Mayer, and Brad Windley, veterinarian. And then, of course, Debbie Dickie, as our director. So all, in the same motion, we accept those recommendations. Motion by Tim Stutfield?
Second.
Second by Robert, and discussion? And there will be some more committees that will be putting on the table for your reappointing, some new people, our March, Commission Committee.
Does anyone want to change their vote?
None.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Our colleague here has a question for Mr. Morris.
Big Thomas. You had mentioned earlier about wanting to apply the procedures back to I, what is I about? Is that still, do you still desire to do that? Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Jordan.
Okay. There being no other. Number nine, unfinished business. There being none. Ten, new business. Ten A, Resolution 2019-02. Resolution to support state legislation repealing the provision that reduces the commission retained by the county register of deeds.
Okay, thank you. Ross, and this is sent out to you earlier. And the legislature association has reviewed this. And this is being sent out to implement all counties. So the legislature can actually list to essentially restore that 2.6%, I guess, that the counties have been giving up all these years since, I think, 2006. So the economic impact of that sheet estimation would be around $3,000. Money's coming back to the county. So I appreciate the, thank you for reading that. Thank you, Don Tony, for spinning that. A motion to approve. Both by Dwight Miller and Ashley. Second by Ashley. Discussion. Good resolution. Any discussion? There being none, let's vote, please.
Ten B, Budget Amendments.
Counting three, we're reading tonight. First one is 101, 2019-7. This is a decrease in our assigned fund balance of $447,878. Increase state unclaimed property refund, 114,622. Increase insurance recovery, $120,000. Increase in expenditures to other charges and judgments, $682,500. So decrease to our assigned fund balance of $447,878, which the balance at this point would be $2832,657. That is payment for healing lawsuits. The next one is 171, 2019-8. This is for capital projects. A decrease in unsigned fund balance, $22,050. Increase in data processing equipment, $3,450. Increase public health and welfare, health equipment, $18,600. There's a decrease in the unsigned fund balance of $22,050, which the revised amount is $388,568. And the last one, this was approved at the December 11 budget meeting, but it was left out of the agenda. It is for the drug fund. Decrease in unsigned fund balance, $40,000. Increase in drug enforcement evaluation and testing, $20,000. This is a decrease in the unsigned fund balance of $40,000. The new revised balance is $577,108. So these were all approved by the legislature for this committee.
Thank you, Mayor. A motion to approve those three amendments. Motion by Amy. Second by Tim Sutt. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. Thank you, Mayor.
Does anyone want to change their vote?
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, the next one is the budget calendar for the 2020 budget. This process that requested the April 16 date be changed to April 30. So that was really too early for them, so there's no objection to making that change.
Thank you, Mayor. After putting that together, I present that motion to approve the August 2020 fiscal budget calendar. Motion by Tilda Stutfield. Second by Jackie Duncan. Discussion.
On the calendar, you can look down when it says April 16. They want that to be April 30. Yes. Yeah, I just want to mention.
Not if the maker of the motion intended to accept it as he, as he were.
Yes.
That's not the maker of the motion and the person we say, if they were wired to that change. So she mentioned that.
You'll hear that. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Okay.
TMD, Resolution 2019-03. Resolution to request the state legislature to amend TCA 674-1425 to authorize adding an exception for Coffee County to allow it to adopt and implement a hotel motel tax throughout the county.
Motion to approve. Motion approved by Mr. Bryant. Second to approve by Dwight Miller. Discussion.
I'd just like to make a couple comments just for clarity. Lord, correct me if I'm wrong here, but because there's been a lot of discussion about this going out in the community. And I just want to clarify for the public, what we're voting on tonight is not an actual tax increase.
That's true.
We're an application to allow, be allowed to do it. And so anything about setting rates or anything like that, we're not having any of that discussion tonight. This is just to give us, hopefully, to have the authority to review it if we chose to. Any discussions on rates would occur at that time, not tonight.
Well, and also, the first thing on this is if the tax authorization is made for the legislature and then adopted by the commission, it will not be taxed in the local. It will be, there will be states that are in hotels and motels and it will not. It will have to alleviate the demand on citizens of the county.
So our county residents will not be paying that, as you said, if they be those committees or committees. Okay?
Unless someone's filming me.
Unless they do. I'll thank Mr. Husky in our review this. We've spent a lot of time reviewing this on that budget finance for baby this very thoroughly. And I'll thank Mr. Husky for putting this on the table. And he worked some of the weekend and whatever, got the red horse yesterday. So it's here, it's researched or reviewed again, it's very thorough, very professional. And I think it narrows, it pieces on the table. And then this, once approved by the commission, then we will send this to, Chris's office will send this to our representatives so they can get this in the hopper, to put in the hopper soon again in the legislative process. And we'll get this thing reviewed and act upon it.
Anyone want to change their vote?
None. Thank you. Thank you for pointing out that this thing's fine and researched, put on the table and passed. So thank you.
Your reports are standing, please. Budget calendars.
Well, we've already, I'm sorry. We've already voted on most of what the person found is covered. So I guess you know that. Basically, it was, we had discussions about this motel hotel tax. And we did meet with the Sheriff Card, Park, and turned to jail and had some discussions there. And we had met with some of the members of the PDA. And I guess that's about all the pickup too, isn't it, hasn't it?
Thank you. And whatever, whatever it's worth, Cat, Lord. Well, we have the women who this 58 page book that are studying all the tax situation, whatever. And you can leave all across the state, there's about 27 different ways of taxing the way they're doing this. But I think we have a resolution on the table. And I thank y'all for your research and spaghetti.
Legislative Committee.
Mr. Chairman, Legislative Committee makes its fourth meeting of this month at 5:00 conference room 1. And anyone that would like to have any input on what we discussed previously in regard to the application process, something about it. One matter I'd like to mention to the legislative bodies, hold, previous legislative committees address minutes, committees, authorities, and boards. And apparently, the process has not been quite what we were hoping for. And I would like to ask that all committees, boards, and authorities submit a copy of their minutes as timely as possible after their meeting to all members of this legislative body. Not just to their committee members. But have those emailed to all 21 legislative body members. And if there's an issue with that, submit those to Roxanne in the mayor's office. And I feel that she will get that done. But I don't feel that we need to wait until that committee meets again to approve those minutes. The committee can meet again and make corrections, deletions, whatever with the minutes. And when they do that, in their next seven minutes, we'll see any corrections that were made. But I feel all legislative body members need to get those minutes so they have information of what's going on with committees, what recommendations, and so forth, before they have to deal with these items as is here on the commission's plate. And I feel that that process has not been working very well and that all the commissioners have not been receiving all minutes of all committees, boards, and authorities. And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask that you see that that is implemented.
Okay. I know this has been reviewed and requested by this legislative meeting in the past on encouraging all committees, commissions, authorities, and boards to get those minutes as quickly as appropriate to represent what we're in the conference about. Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Health, Water, and Recreation.
Just to report, we did, we did not meet in December. We will have a meeting on the Fourth of June, uh, this month.
Capital Outlay.
Capital Outlay, May, January 3, this year. All members were present. That's a good thing. We, as the normal procedure goes, Robert Gill made his presentation just to tell us what all is going on. And it's amazing what all that man takes care of. And it would just take me 45 minutes to go over what he told us. But mainly, he's doing floor repairs, HVAC replacements. There's generators being installed at ambulance stations, roof repairs. He just lands his bus when it comes to building maintenance. And we're lucky to have him. Capital Outlay had no official business to act on. So there's really nothing else to report. But while I have the floor, I have a brief, what Commissioner Bryant said about the minutes. And I've done a great deal of study in procedure, protocol. Minutes are called minutes for a reason. They're not called hours. When you do, when you do your minutes, minutes are merely to reflect the When you do, when you do your minutes, minutes are merely to reflect the actions taken. You don't have to report every single word that was spoken by each member and each visitor. So I'm just helping out people to take the minutes, value minutes. So just be condensed and concise, tell us what you did. That's all I have.
I will thank Tracy and Donna and her team for the minutes of each commission meeting that you have to every, have every month, getting the facts in its format. So we don't have to read them out. So thank you all for the good job you did.
Law enforcement.
There is nothing needed to report. We have a meeting at four thirty this Thursday.
Personnel compensation.
Nothing to report this time, but we do have a meeting tomorrow at four thirty. In my conference room, conference room one.
Okay, there being, we don't have any special committees right now. Never live in statements and announcements from the commission.
What?
The PBA is going to be this Friday. I think they may be eleven thirty.
At thirty, conference room.
It's another meeting. Anyone that's interested, encourage you to attend.
Thank you.
Public comments?
Both of us.
I just have a quick question about the phone plan. So either decided to wait on public building authority? And why not let who had the application process? Why not wait for the other committees? Why did you both decide not to, not to have the members from the other committees? But you want to have the application process in order to have members in order to the PBA?
Helen, could you speak up a little bit? I'm having trouble. If you could arrest that. Having trouble hearing, Elaine. My hearing's not the best in the world.
So you decided to wait for the new, for the appointments to the PBA to have the application process in place. But at the same time, you voted to appoint new members to some of the other committees. So I was wondering why wait for this specific committee to have the application process in place and not wait for the other to have appointments made to the other committees?
Can I speak to that? The PBA oversees the conference center. The conference center is one of the few government entities in this county that is expected to make a profit. Every other entity in this county is spending money. And we intend for that business out there to be in the black, not the red. So I'm assuming the individuals that have voted to go for this application process is to be sure we choose individuals that have the management skills to make the business operate in the black and not the red. That's the way I see it.
Can I add a thing on that?
I don't know why it hates me. But also like the industrial board, we also did it for the industrial board. And there was quite honestly miscommunication last night with that. And so we didn't think that was a fair process. But those, the industrial board and PBA are two very important boards. And I think everybody knows that. I really do. And this is not to belittle the beer board or anything like that. But I'm going to be more picky and I want to have more information and follow a due process on the larger boards than I do like of your board that we're going to allow like two or three commissioners on. And that meets as needed and is not a set monthly meeting.
That was a good answer. Thank you, Asher.
Can I just?
Mark, here, Dr. Mark.
Add to that, the, the ones that we did vote on were commissioners like, a lot of these boards are commissioners only. The PBA and industrial board are citizens in the community. And so that's the major difference there, just to be specific about it. And so just like what that all said, we're trying to make it an application process so everyone knows the process and everyone has an opportunity to apply with full understanding of that. So that's the major difference on the ones that we did vote on.
Another question.
And I just wanted to, that's why I asked the question, because the audit committee is not only commissioners. And I think you're going to roll through it, it's also not only commissioners. That's why I was kind of a little confused and wanted to ask that question.
Let me just make a quick comment. We're not, we're not, it's not for debate necessarily. I think anytime we're talking about something like this, this is the most things that as they got into talks because they saw a problem, now we're going to try to fix that problem going forward. But obviously the most important ones are, as Ashley said, these, these two boards are the ones that are really key. The other ones, yeah, going forward, you're going to follow that process. You got to start somewhere, I think, with what we're doing.
That's a good start.
I have a question.
Yeah.
With the changes of the, the people who sell the board for PBA, with the changes which it comes, that is voted on by you, mayor and, and the caucus refers it. If someone comes that, that, if you choose someone who is in the city, can they have property in the city and live in the county? Does it change them that they don't have to barely live in that? That they can have a business and property in the city to be recommended?
I think it's based on how you vote. I think it's based on how you vote, the address you used to vote. It's.
But if you live in the, if you live in the city and you, if you live in the county and you have property in the, in the city and you choose to vote in the, in the city, then you can.
Undermine, I thought it was how to vote. What is registered?
That's what I was told also, everyone else on the.
I know, I know some people that, that have property in the city and they live in the county, but they voted for me for the city. So they could be put on, we randomly from the city.
Here, I recognize a link.
I just want to comment, state law, positively, our large, state law says the mayor is the one that we, we confer.
Right.
By my taking that, he could appoint anybody he wants to if we were willing to vote that way down on PBA. But we have the tradition here for letting the caucus make that decision. I'd say that's a compromise.
I agree with that. Well, I, I was thinking as far as in the city of encouraging people to, right for the position right now that, that you're appointed, it can be just anybody in Coffee County. That's, that's the way it's going to go now?
No, no, no. It's how you're registered to the, you know, so you're registered to that.
I think it should be replaced with residency. I don't know how that happens. And that's how that appointment will be. So.
But in the future, if, if you're wanting to have somebody from Manchester, if that person has property and they, they vote in the city, then, then they can, they can vote for, they can be asked to be put on PBA, correct? I'd like to know so that, that encourage people to city to run.
If it's a city.
I recognize, I recognize our attorney.
Mayor, I think what you're talking about is something that would be totally removed from these various committees or, or boards. The, the provision that allows property owners in the city who are not residents in the city is because they have financial interests in the city. And so it's, that's a special exception in the statute that's allowed. And there's living tables on it. But that doesn't change anything about any counting process about where people are from. Because you could have a person that owns property all over the country, that don't mean they can vote all over the country and be appointed and anything there just because they own property there. But don't confuse being able to vote in the city. When you vote in the city, you only vote on city matters in the city. You don't vote, you don't get a different vote from your county or none of that. It just allows you to vote on the city things.
So if we encourage people in Manchester to, to come to you guys in PBA, they, they have to live in the city, right?
Well, it depends on.
The mayor can appoint them. Well, the mayor has by statute the authority to appoint and the commission confirms. The county hasn't had a practice of dividing up the caucus that we're using previously. They've called it for the year. They don't have to follow that, but it's been done a while. But the statute says the mayor can appoint them and then the commission confirms. And he could do it another way if he chose to. But the one that he's applying is one that's been done for many years before. When there's some issues on the matter and the logical thing was to go back to that. But that's his call.
Thank you.
I guess just one question I would add, just for clarity. Do we have any sort of residency requirement whatsoever for these board positions as a general rule?
That'd be a kind of. It depends on what it is and various things. Most of these, like it talks about electors, kind of a entity or county. But there's, so that's something you couldn't answer across the board. Some, some statutes require for certain things where it's silent on that stuff.
And to tell you that, if you have any comments or questions?
Well, I can only say that the last PBA board we picked, the mayor approved, we required that person, that resident to be resident of the home, from the home caucus. And I think in the past, that's probably had good practice from rural communities. Now I can't speak for them. But we require that resident to live inside the city minutes. If that's the case, we could have had a couple more that said, you know, I have a business inside the city. Why can't I do that? Or I vote inside, yeah, I live in the county. But, but we require strictly to be a city residence. And that's how we picked the last one.
My chair.
Mr. Chairman, prior to that, and what Mr. Tucker Phillips looked to, before the PBA elected to come in and change membership appointments on the PBA and which C task is issuing legal opinion, they do not have a right to do. It's only the county legislative body that has the right to appoint PBA members. And the composition that has been historically there has been two, two and one. Two rule, two Manchester, two Telomac and then at large. At discretion of the mayor to make appointments to them be confirmed by the county legislative body. In fact, what Mr. Tucker Phillips said, if you say Manchester means residents of Manchester, or residents of rural area, or residents of Telomac. Not where the, my young property and so forth is where they reside.
Any other comments on that or anything else? There being nothing else, do I have a motion to the chair? Motion by Jackie, second by someone. All the way.